All right, listen.
Now that I'm recording now.
I know. Yeah, I did. I actually went to him twice. It's exactly the same font and everything.
Did you just knock the dust off that hat this year?
No, it's a brand new one.
A brand new?
My son got it. Yeah, they're on a string, man. They, I know.
Holy smokes.
They actually lost last night. I couldn't believe it.
Oh, did they?
Thirty-three and five. They're playing like a team.
They're fun to watch.
I know. I still have a shirt from the 2016 championship.
It is 6:30 and we'll start this meeting of Marion City Council on the 13th of January 2025. If we could take the roll.
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
Ms. Lang?
Here.
Mr. T. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. R. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mrs. Stoneburner?
Present.
Next is time for our invocation. Do I happen to have Pastor Shiloh Stimson here? I've spoken with her on the phone but never seen her, and I realize that I don't see the Aunt Owings. So do I have a volunteer to lead us in an invocation?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Dear Lords, we come to you today. We want to thank you so much for all your blessings that you give us. Please be with the city council tonight as they conduct the city's business. Office make the right decisions, in your precious name we ask, amen.
Thank you, Gail.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in whose wisdom liberty and justice for all.
Council, we begin with summary of proceedings. Everyone read through. Mr. Neff?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
A motion to approve by Mr. Neff and looks like a second from Mr. T. Smith.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
No.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
And move on to old business. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rollins, sorry.
Yeah, can I ask Councilwoman Lang if there was an issue with the minutes that need addressed? Did you just not get a time to?
Um, I just think that because this represents us as a city, that it needs to be proofread. There's a lot of missed words. There's some context testing. And I just don't know to prove them the way they are, and I have talked to the clerk about it.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go into old business then. Item number one, 2024-134 combined.
Ordinance to vacate part of the southeast quarter of Section 21, comma, T-5-5, comma, R-15-E, also being part of Chase Street and part of a 12-foot, 5-inch wide alley as planted in the John J. Haynes additions of the city of Marion, Ohio, more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A in pursuit to Ohio Revised Code 723.041 retaining permanent easement rights.
And this is out of Streets and Sewers Committee. Mr. Barr?
Yes, I came out with a 3O recommendation. This is the third reading. I have nothing further for discussion or for a public hearing.
A public hearing, yes, all right. At this point, we will start a public hearing at 6:34 for this issue. Anyone has any questions or concerns? Hearing done. We'll end this public hearing at 6:34 and, um... Do we have to vote? Mr. Smith?
Make a motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt by Mr. T. Smith, and it looks like a second from Mr. Neff.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
If he cares unanimously. Item number two. Ordinance 2024-133, ordinance for budget transfers.
Ordinance consistent with the directive received from the Auditor of State's office enabling inter-budgetary transfers applicable to each annual budget adopted by the city thereafter.
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Lang?
This came out of Finance Committee with a 3O recommendation to approve. Tonight is the second reading for this. Basically, it just gives the departments the ability to transfer funds within, inner department, um, not including, um, wages and salaries and benefits and such. Ms. Court Wright, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I have no additional comments to add.
Any questions, some questions?
Ms. Court Wright, is there any time constraint on this?
No, I had this passed last, um, in December, so I didn't realize it didn't pass, but, um, budget adjustments I, um, would be done and the reporting would be presented to you in February. But that's, I don't think that's what's attached. 133, when I took the link, it took me to like regular transfers, which probably got confused when I talked to you.
So, Ms. Lang? Basically, until this is approved, no department can transfer any funds within a...
The way that I think it was actually approved didn't allow it, but this is a clear decision process. So we had it in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barr?
Go ahead, Mr. Schaubert.
I was just trying to flip through the minutes to see, because I remember voting on this. But I can't, and I can't remember if it was a suspension of rules.
It was a suspension because it was the first reading.
Okay, so the suspension failed then. But I was trying to flip through my minutes, but I am not very organized.
It was 5-3.
So the attachment on the link is taking it to a general budget transfer that we've done in the past. It is not actually the ordinance that I was expecting.
To be talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
So that's why I got confused when I came up.
Council, let's leave this as the second reading.
I guess my question is us not passing this isn't holding up anything.
It's not, it's not, but you're obviously going to report in February, ready adjustments. We created a couple of new accounts, so there's been some inter-fund transfers, but it's not been anything monumental until...
Okay.
But the report, I'm already generating the backup for that report to give you in February.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Uh, new business? Item number three, ordinance 2025-002 Downtown Marion Inc.
Ordinance three declaring the city of Marion support for Downtown Marion Inc., uh, including but not limited to financial support in order to continue the community's efforts to revitalize the downtown area and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. R. Smith, this is coming out of your committee?
Uh, yes, it came out of our committee with a 3O recommendation to approve. I have nothing further to add. Anybody from the city who has anything? I also think that it's very good. Downtown Marion Inc. has done a lot for our city, and I have nothing to say but positive things about that organization.
Any other questions? Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah, I don't think anyone can ever question the commitment of this organization, and it's always been my understanding that this is an important piece that goes hand in hand with the budget, that they can't receive money until that the declaration of support is passed. And so, and I think our funding is vital to the organization, and I'll make a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the three readings?
A second.
And a second from Mr. Prater. Motion from Mr. Ratliff. When you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
No.
Mr. T. Smith?
No.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion fails with a 5 to 4, 5 years to 4 and 8.
Madam President?
I'm sorry?
Before we move on to the next item, my copy doesn't appear like it's formatted properly. Is that just because these are the copies that I receive? It's not a big deal. I just, so, and then the last ordinance is even different on my copies.
Mr. Smith, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, I may, yeah. Mine is similar to that. I would assume it's in an effort to save paper.
It's missing the signature lines, that's it.
Okay, so it...
Our official ordinance is, has the signature lines in it.
Okay.
As to the last one, I have been trying to figure out how to get that off there. It's not on the Word document, but I save it to a PDF. That gray line keeps showing up on that ordinance, and I don't know why.
Because of the three ordinances we just discussed, the first one looks like it always does. This one looks like it was printed out on Word, and this one looks similar to the first one, but smaller font with the gray balls.
The next to the last one is missing the clerk's signature. I couldn't see printing out entire sheets for signature lines that are going to end up in the garbage as soon as we're done.
Right, that was my question. As long as it's just our copies, it's...
And I apologize, I probably should have explained that earlier, but...
Okay, thank you for the question. All right, so we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record, supporter of Downtown Marion Inc., I'm not sure where I would try and to push this through without a presentation. I think we should hold them to the same standard that we're going to hold Can Do and other organizations. That was the reason for my no vote.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lang?
Um, also, same reason as Councilman Rollins. Um, and also, the numbers I have here is the operating budget for 2025, and it is requested that they submit an annual report, um, to the council for 2024, and I don't see those numbers, and I would like to see that information also. And I would also like to have the opportunity to review all the items without... I'm not saying that I'm not in support of it. I would just like to review everything.
All right, thank you. Anything further? All right, move on to item number four, Resolution 2025-001 First Energy Rating Increase.
Resolution declaring the council's opposition to First Energy's proposed rate increase and requesting the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio deny said request and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ratliff?
Uh, yes, this was actually a request that came in to us from, from the state, and we passed it on to council, and, you know, just so we can get it to them, because they're kind of gathering every, every municipality's resolution asking for this not to be accepted. I'll make a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the three readings rule, and Mr. Smith looks like he had the second. Mr. T. Smith? When you're set?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend. Careers, Mr. Ratliff?
And I'll make a motion to adopt as well, please.
Mr. Ratliff has a motion to adopt. Mr. Prater, I'll give you the second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, I wanted to restate it, um, to declare the council's opposition to First Energy's proposed rate increase. Uh, item number five, ordinance 2025-003 Street Resurfacing.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the city engineer prepare plans and specifications, advertise for bids, and enter into contracts according to ODOT's local LET procedures for the M-A-R-4-D and 309 resurfacing project in the city of Marion, Ohio, appropriating the necessary funds and declaring an emergency.
Uh, this comes out of the committee, Mr. Barr?
Yes, I come out Streets and Sewers with a 3O recommendation to approve. This is for Route 4, north and south Prospect Street, and 309, Kenton Avenue there. So do some resurfacing. It's probably going to be, it's going to be an 80/20 split of the state, but that 20% is also in large city funds in their coffers, so that won't really come out of any of our monies. But what could come out of our monies would be the design phase of it, so... Any questions? Did I say that all right, Mr. Engineer?
Questions from council and the public? Mr. Rollins?
I'll make a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the three readings rule. Uh, Mr. Rollins, you have the second?
Yes.
When you ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries. Mr. Rollins?
Motion to approve.
Rollins has a motion to approve. Mr. I'm sorry.
So the question, who does the design? Do we do that in-house, or do we, or will we pay someone else to do?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That it?
Yep.
Mr. R. Smith, I think you have the second of Mr. Rollins's motion to approve. When you're set?
Who have the second?
I'm set. Mr. R. Smith?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Order of street resurfacing. Item six, Resolution 2025-002, another street resurfacing.
Madam President, before we get into it, does anyone, where is the resolution?
Item number six.
Yeah.
It should be the one that's got the gray strip on it.
I have a question.
It's not. It says...
Yeah, that doesn't even exist on our agenda.
You had a different question, Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, I noticed that item three is 2025-002, and so is item six. They're two totally different ordinances.
One's a...
2025-003 has been going to committee next week. It's not going to committee.
Yeah, but this says, we've got two ordinances here.
One's a resolution, one's an ordinance.
Because I don't have 002. I have 003.
Yeah, I have.
We're okay with that ordinance 003 that we dispensed.
Right, I'm missing 002, Resolution 002.
Is it right on the digital?
No.
Sorry, may I suspend that?
I apologize. I've got Resolution 2025-003 in your packet.
And that was destined for committee?
Yeah, that's on the way to committee.
Do you have it upstairs that we can take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Could do that? That makes sense?
You have to put some recess.
Um, I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess then.
I second it.
We have a motion for Mr. Ratliff for a five-minute recess and a second for Ms. Lang.
I raised my hand, but it gets ignored. I guess I'm too short.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will take a recess.
Recession.
Five-minute recess.
I don't know.
What's the agenda electronic? Meaning downtown Marion? No, it's just... It's very that we support downtown Marion.
No, I got it, I got it. Well, the agenda's... To me, the other is supporting. And it could be...
We don't want to turn it down low.
You are a city resident. And that's the one that I did confirm. There are two of them. This is, this is $5 countywide, and then we did the other one, $10. So if they call me worse, they can work it for me. You can do it now. We're going to garbage something around. What's the plan on the drop? I think this is the agenda has the... Why don't we get that into the agenda? Thank you. It wasn't for the deadline. You can take your time, but we're going to get it dropped.
What's the 003 then?
Casey said it's due in a committee. I'm, I would have sworn that's from you guys.
I have the same.
Well, apparently it's going in your committee.
I'm the last one to know anything.
No, you're next, because I'm...
No, I'm last. I can't get on to this on my phone. I cannot hand my...
Not buy a laptop.
You won't?
I, I would, because I hate to.
Trina gave me a laptop, but... And I take myself to work with it, so that if something comes through, I have access to it.
First time I heard about it was in the...
But the battery's dead in it, and it has to stay plugged in.
So I say we just appropriate purchase.
I'm going to talk to Casey about if you want to get some bids or something.
Your honor?
It doesn't matter to me, errors.
I don't know if the budget can support it this year. Maybe we can look at...
Thirty-six hundred years. You always slide the. Yeah, I just signed this to fish.
Should I do this?
Republican or? There's not recognition. So.
A recess ran over.
Constitutional chair?
Yep.
Is that your organization or is that a? I just went to. I'm the only one that's like, I'm the only one that's ever been a.
I have to go door by door first when it comes to your press.
Okay, and so I should check them out?
Oh, yeah. There's a couple. What do you do? Let me know what big names pop up, because there's a couple.
There you go. They are, and they're terrible on all.
He had hobbitses. Yeah, she got one down by her house. Do you see? About four years. Spent a lot of money there. Right.
Hey, that was great timing, man.
All right, we are one minute late at 6:57, but thank you for allowing that push of recess. Now we have in front of us. Item number six.
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to apply to Marion County Commissioners for monies derived from the automobile license tax and declaring an emergency.
Okay, yeah, this is from your committee again, Mr. Barr?
You have to come out of committee with a 3O recommendation to approve. Just allow the mayor to apply for the tax monies that's awarded to the city. You have to apply. Any questions from council, administration, or audience?
I just wrote a note to myself. Is this for resurfacing also or just about anything?
Yeah, and there's a list here, and these aren't the only ones, all right? Mr. Engineer?
Correct.
These aren't the only ones, but these are qualifying ones.
Okay.
And they'll narrow down that list after they receive those funds. You have no problem using the $150,000?
Okay, Mr. R. Smith?
Just from my own information, what is the correct resolution number for this?
Resolution 2025-002.
Okay, we passed a different 002 already.
It was an ordinance.
That's an ordinance.
Ah, thank you.
Mr. Ratliff?
Just a correction on what was said earlier. It's always been my understanding that the money that we're applying for here cannot be used for anything that is not on the list.
That's correct.
Okay.
Which, does that tie to my question about resurfacing?
Yeah, but this doesn't mean everything is going to get done from this list. It means it'll narrow down from this list.
Okay.
$150,000 roughly.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Ratliff?
And again, just something that should always be taken into consideration, that there's six wards in the city, and when you have a list of 26, there should be four to five from each ward. And, you know, I wouldn't vote against applying for this, but I just want to point out that the second ward only has two, and I would hope that that would be more fairly distributed in the future.
Anything else? Mr. T. Smith?
Make a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend for Mr. T. Smith, and Mr. Prater has a second.
Second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the three readings rule carries. Mr. T. Smith?
Motion to adopt.
Mr. T. Smith has a motion to adopt.
A second.
And Mr. R. Smith, the second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
And Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries for that resolution for street resurfacing. 2025-002. Do my eyes deceive me or are we on matters not on the agenda now? Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Are you going to burst my bubble?
No, this is matters not on the agenda. I was, I received a phone call a couple of weeks ago, and I've yet to get an answer that I can go back to my constituent with, and it's regarding a sidewalk over by St. Gallen. And I guess there's a lot of police activity there for whatever reason. And the request was, what can be done because of the activity there? And I was asked if we have ever vacated a sidewalk, which we've never had in the 15, 17 years I've been here. Is there, what option, what can I go back to this gentleman with and for a solution for the activities there? It's a sidewalk. I don't believe there's any lights, but does the city put up lights? I believe that's Ohio Edison. I don't know how we increase police traffic on a sidewalk. But there's, this individual has several videos of different activities happening that he doesn't like his kids seeing. So I'm not for sure what I can tell this gentleman.
A question for our law director or for our police chief?
Well, I'll jump in just because you mentioned a number of things.
Yeah.
So the city administration can work with Ohio Edison in regards to street lighting, location of lights.
With where this sidewalk is, it's.
Yeah, but so that's something that could be worked on.
Okay.
Just touch base with the police chief. Neither he or I were aware that there was an issue on St. Gallen. But now that we're aware, the police chief can investigate the activity that he's referring to, but you just brought it to our attention.
Okay.
So we can look into it and go from there to ensure that the neighborhood is safe.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Prater?
Yeah, Mr. Schaubert, have you received any, I know someone that lives on Swiss Avenue.
Okay.
And they complained about people in, around St. Gallen, people parking in their yards.
Okay.
Have you received complaints about that?
I get a lot of calls about that, but not on Swiss, but I will.
But it was, I think it was on St. Gallen. It was like in our neighborhood. And this is somebody I've known for a long time.
Okay, yep, I will see what I can do.
Well, thank you both gentlemen. Any other matters? Oh, Mr. Rollins, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Couple things. First item, I just wondered if we could get any information on the proposal that was in the Marion Star, possibly taking transit to the county? And any information, yeah, sure, any information on how the night moves is going? Fantastic.
Julie Geltz, Transit Administrator. I've got two things tonight. First of all, I have a report for each one of you. And then I have some numbers that were given out in a records request in October. This is a projection. I'm trying to give you all the numbers that I can.
Sure.
And Casey had done this the end of October. So we started October 3rd. I believe this was sent out on October 29th.
Thank you.
Should we just do? Just two sheets?
Two sheets. All the sheets I see say night bus.
And then the night bus report.
Oh, night bus and is different?
Yeah, I'm sorry, should have passed it off.
Well, our telephone game got.
Those two, yep.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, here's another stack. We have another stack.
All right, so for December, we had 127 riders that we counted. I believe our numbers for November were 121. I tried to break this down into some regular ridership and then also New Year's Eve. We had a contract that night, but there were a lot of riders. More than that in overall. We typically don't count weddings or other private events in our numbers. But that one I wanted to because we, it was just a different type of evening. And as you can see, we have the $5 fare. I tried to break it down. Twelve riders that use that one way. Most of them were work-related, so we picked up some people near Papa John's and we take them to Meyer. Those were work-related. Others do the $10 pass where they ride all night. They might get off a couple of times and get back down. We had four contract rentals in December, two weddings, a private Christmas lights tour, and then the New Year's Eve event. And as you can see at the bottom, we have the total. So this is the numbers that I have been giving every month, the last, this is the third. Prior to my time as Transit Administrator, our gasoline, we get the gasoline at the central garage. All of the buses use the same code. I'm in the process of trying to update that and change it. Where everybody has their own, so we can track our numbers for the night bus when it comes to the gasoline. Our report was done middle of December for November, and it was too late to start that process. So I've now done that for January. So moving forward, I'm hoping to give you more accurate numbers on the cost of the bus. Casey and I have been working together closely on all of this as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
I have another little transit report because I've heard lots of chatter out there. After listening to Councilman Schaubert's radio report today, and a lot of misinformation being spread, I wanted to just give a brief update. Number one, our Christmas lights tour. We had five sponsors, and we served 483 riders, took them, including 78 seniors. We did 12 nights, and we brought in $4,150 in donations from those five sponsors. I had 10 drivers who received overtime in the month of December at approximately $3,100. And that left the rest, about a little more than $1,000 for gasoline. Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
So just a couple other little quick updates, since we're talking about transit. At the end of December, I received an email from the Office of Transit at ODOT. They had additional funds available for planning. I filled out the application, and we are currently working with ODOT to do a study provided by them on an evening work route. They plan to do an employer and community outreach, or a public meeting, and a possible visit to city council chairs as well. This study must be done by June 30th, 2025. So it was some additional funds that they had. There was an opportunity. I saw it and decided to apply for it to see, is there a need for a night work route? And I've had a couple of Teams meetings with them, and I'm excited to move forward with that. Hopefully in the next week or so, I'll hear more about that. In November, along with this, we were awarded $100,000 from that workforce mobility grant that I applied for in July. If you guys remember, that was my first grant. We will, we haven't received the fund yet, therefore we haven't ordered the bus. But in the springtime, is what I've been told by ODOT. ODOT does a lot of changing. You never know what's going to happen. But I'm excited to be able to use that and put that into service for this route. And then let's talk about countywide, since you brought that up. Are you guys aware that JFS has a large contract with Marl County Transit, taking people all over Marion County? Those dollars belong in Marion. In the summer of '22, ODOT conducted a study about the need to go countywide. I was made aware of this study in November, when it was sent to me. It's the first time I had seen it. And with the help of our mobility manager, Jim Oliver, we met with our county commissioners and presented the need. They voted no, but we were told to come back again in 2025. And with the new commissioner, they will fund our request. We asked for help hiring two part-time drivers. We realized that that is not the full cost of countywide transit. But it's a start, right? We have to start small. We can't just mark that box and say we're countywide and then, you know, all the expenses and everything. We have to start small. So I don't know if you guys remember, the senior center, last January, Mayor Collins had given them the go-ahead to take people out of the county for medical transport. That started last January. He started with four. And then in October, that was the last numbers that I heard, there were 48. So that's kind of what we're looking to do, is start small. We have talked about maybe a window, 10 to 2, 11 to 3, and having people call in if they need a county ride. Obviously, we want to talk about it and we want to get it out there. We're not there yet. We're close. But what we'll do is have them schedule 24 hours in advance. And then we're going to charge per mile for this countywide program. Casey and I have been working together on that, those numbers, to make sure that we are, you know, taking care of the cost to do that.
Do you know when the contract is up with JFS and?
So I have met with them, with our mobility manager. It is his goal to help us expand, and I don't know when their contract is up. They, they don't want to give it up. We'll talk to them, right? And, you know, my goal eventually would be to help gain some of that back. We're going to try to supplement that and kind of go from there.
Thank you.
Just to add, just to add a little bit to what she's talking about, so it's really irrelevant for us to try to plan this venture if right off the bat commissioners say no. So that's why that was the first step, was to go over there.
So that's why that was the first step, was to go over there and see if they would be akin to us going on this venture. Otherwise, why put all the work into it if they're not going to do it? And what we heard was that, no, they didn't want to do it at the time. But what we've since have heard is with a new commissioner and maybe a different vote, that they, that they certainly may be interested in that. So as we go to the drawing board and talk to them, and if in fact they are interested in that, then that's when a lot more work will be done and we'll, we'll figure out exactly how that program would work. And then obviously it will be brought to council before we take off in that direction.
Okay. Thank you both.
One little thing that I'd like to add too. By going county-wide, checking that little box, that we're county-wide. We're, if you read the article, we're one of four counties that are not in the whole state of Ohio. Two of them are in conversation. We're one of the two that are not included in that, even though we are talking about it now. ODOT, they score our application. So when they're funding us for the federal and the state funds. If we're not county-wide, we don't get, we fall down to the bottom of the list. So it's super important for us to go county-wide to get more funding, to keep our funding, I should say. And that's been an update that since I've been here, they've changed the scoring. They just sent that out to us in late November. You know, the scoring sheet that they use in transparency for us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Ratliff?
Yo, Julie. Just some, just some overall thought here. I think that this program got off on the wrong foot. I think that this program did not have very good communication from the very start. And I think that that has been discussed and we've discussed about it being better moving forward. And so I think there continues to be some negativity on this from the very start. And just, it doesn't help the program when council people read it in the paper before they are told about it for the second or third time on the same exact, on the, on the same, on the same exact bus.
So you're talking about the county-wide?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I was interviewed by the Marion Star reporter, Abby. She had come to the county commissioners, right? I was not aware when that was coming out. Just sharing with you, you know, they're the ones who started that. We have a new commissioner. They're, they're the ones who spurred that because they want to get county support.
They as in who?
The commissioners, Mark Davis, Kevin Davidson. They're the ones, they're both quoted in that article. They're the ones who started that process, right?
Okay. I'm just, I'm just saying if I was running a program that was, had some negativity behind it, I wouldn't continue the poor communication route that this, the whole program started with, that I believe started the negativity to begin with.
So let's back up. Transit has had some negativity long before I came. I'm trying to help that, right? We started the night bus. And I think that's what you're referring to, not the county-wide. The county-wide is just an expansion. We're, we're working. There's so many different, just, I know Mayor and Mike would say the same. Avenues that we're trying to expand. This is just one of them.
Okay, so, but my question to you is, do the council member knows, does, does any council member know the areas you're trying to expand?
I tried to be super transparent tonight and share that with you.
So there's going to be no expansion that any person reads in the paper that doesn't know tonight?
I mean, the, the night work route, it just talked about the planning. And I'm trying to be, to let you guys know that that's in the works, right? And then, you know, I gave you a report on the Christmas lights. And then also the county, you know, we talked about that. Yeah, and, you know, if grants, right? I had another surprise last week about another bus that was ordered, or not ordered, but funded. In August of '23, I received some money, but I haven't got it yet. It's coming for another bus. So we should, we have, we were awarded two buses this coming year, or this year. I don't have those, the funds out there yet, but we will be ordering a bus. I'll be bringing that to you guys before city council. And I worked with clerk on finding a resolution for that when it was, which we struggled big time this week to find. I think we did find it, where it was applied for in August of '23. That's a replacement bus. We've already replaced the bus with the three new ones, so.
Mr. Bar?
We could stand here all night and tell you all the updates.
Well, just to clarify with the replacement bus, we, we replaced buses when we had an extra bus. That hadn't met its, its mileage yet to be decommissioned or sold off or anything. So that's where we came up with the idea of the night moves bus.
Correct.
And we had an extra bus sitting there. What can we do with this to try to provide a service for the citizens, right? And then from there, we're trying to expand even more. Okay, now is there a bus, a work route that we can do? So I just wanted to clarify, that's where that extra bus came. We didn't go out and buy another bus for that night moves bus. It was an extra bus that was going to be sitting, right?
So we had a meeting and we talked about this extra bus, right? There was an extra bus. I received three buses July 22nd. We could only dispose of two. The police department took one and then we have one for the auction when they have it. The reason that we could only dispose of two, it has to be 180,000 miles and seven years old. I only had two that fit that criteria. So we had an extra bus. I've also heard talk about the wraps. This night bus, the wrap for the night bus was paid for out of our regular funding, right? We did not go above and beyond anywhere. And if, we wouldn't have put the night moves wrap on it. We would have put a Love Your City wrap on it because it was a brand-new bus. We had to wrap it or put some type of graphics on it. So, yeah, just trying to explain, you know. Everything that I put into this bus is the same that I would have put into a normal bus that we put in our daily service.
Mr. Schaubert?
Thank you for your report tonight. How many buses will we end up when this new, this bus you became aware of comes in?
So we have 13 buses right now.
Okay.
The workforce mobility one, we learned of, will be awarded in the spring. Not sure the date.
Okay.
That's when the funds are available and we will order.
And then we will have 14?
And then we'll have 14.
14, okay.
But backing up, last week, I received an email that this was going to be, that we were awarded 53.39 funds. And I'm like, what's that? And I knew what it was, I knew it was a bus, but I, first I'd heard it. There was no record of it anywhere. I dug and dug and files and, you know, Excel spreadsheets, couldn't find anything. So I reached out to Matt Pollak and I also talked to ODOT. And they said, this was applied for in August of '23 and it's a bus. He said, you can send it back if you'd like. But 80% obviously is paid for by ODOT. So then we'll have two total for this year, so that'll bring us to 15.
So you'll have 15? And so before we add any different bus routes, what is the number of buses that are required to do the regular activities we have now?
So when I, you know, we don't have a specific number of buses. I will dispose of a couple as soon as they're available to because they're 10 years old and they're, you know, starting to cost maintenance.
I guess what I'm asking is, will we have, because we're realizing we're gaining these buses and, and I'm glad that we're adding services, night, evening, two work routes and, and even expanding into the county, but, so we won't have rolling stock just sitting?
Yes, we, we always have to have a couple that are backup buses.
Right, right. So, but we.
I have them now.
Okay. Okay.
Those new buses that she's talking about also, just because we get the money to order them, if she orders them in a month or two, they may take a year to get here. I mean, they're so far behind that by the time we get them, we certainly will have stock.
You'll be trading them out.
We certainly have stock we'll need to rotate.
Okay. Well, I guess that's probably where my confusion is. Because we're not receiving them, we just receive money to order them and the order will take whatever lead time the, okay, okay. That makes sense.
They're not ordered yet.
Because it wouldn't make sense to me to have a whole bunch of rolling stock and then try to create routes just to keep them rolling. Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks very much, Ms. Rollins. Ms. Rollins?
I just wanted to introduce our grant holder, Zoe Brown, who's with us tonight. I just wanted her to come to council and with us for the meeting and meet all you guys. So if you guys have any questions with her, she's entered short time here already. She's already won two grants, so we're pretty stoked about that. And we've got a lot of plans in the future, so just wanted you guys to meet.
Welcome and thank you.
While we're introducing for his first official night, Rob Cowell, the new safety director, came to us, obviously everybody knows him already from the fire department. And today was his official official day. Thank you.
Congratulations on the board. Thank you. Ms. Ratliff?
Just for information, I think it's great that you said she's got two grants already. Can, do we, do we know what those are?
One is through.
Oh, come to the podium, please.
Get your name. Name and address.
My name is Zoe Brown. One is through EECBG, it's the Ohio Department of Energy. It's for the stadium life that Kennedy and Maynard. And then the other is through ODNR for Trail Vision Park.
Thank you.
Any other matters? All right. Hearing that, we'll go on to scheduling committee meetings. Ms. Lang, airport plans and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. R. Smith, jobs and economic development?
I believe we will try to resolve that tracks issue.
I have not gotten anything back from.
Nothing yet. Do you want to schedule it?
Do you want to schedule it at 6:30 or no?
I would like to have, uh, the, um, yeah, if you would have a government block development committee, I'll bring the committee, the schedule for upcoming block grant process, your citizen participation process. And probably also a programmatic agreement between the city and Marion and Ohio and the State Preservation Office, which has lost its executive arm. So it goes to one of them to, to clerk this.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll schedule one, 6:30, 5:00?
Uh, 6:30 is.
6:30?
Will that work?
Yes, that works.
All right. Mr. Neff, legislation codes and regulations?
Nothing at this time.
Management tracks? Because of the same issue or that's what I have there? Mr. Schaubert?
Mr. Neff, could it be possible just to at least have a brief discussion on House Bill 315, how it'll affect us and if we need to do anything? Or just let House Bill, House Bill 315 roll out, how it's, how it's been passed?
Would you care to elaborate?
You don't know what House Bill 315 is?
Nope.
It's, it's the, it grants a fee to be associated with record request. And so.
Well, that's right.
The video.
Yeah. So I think we should at least have a discussion, see which way we want to go. But you're the chair, I'll leave that up to you.
House Bill 315, 6:35.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, something else?
He just, he just mentioned that he thought it was already signed.
Yeah, it was signed, but there's, there's a portion of it that we can either waive any fees or just let it roll out however it's.
I think it's up to 750.
Right, right.
Okay. Municipal services parks, all right?
We will call a meeting at 6:40. DDKN resolution.
All right. Mr. Ratliff, health utilities?
And we will go 6:45. We're going to talk about the Columbia gas rate increase and hopefully pass a resolution asking for that to be shut down as well.
Okay. Regional planning, Mr. Smith?
Fourth Wednesday.
January 22nd, as scheduled then. Mr. Barr, speak, is yours?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Prater, zoning annexation?
Yes, for possible zoning code recommendations at 6:50.
6:50 is your time, yeah. And finally, Ms. Lang, finance?
There'll be something, I'm sure, so 6:55.
There's a final transfer authorization, piece of legislation.
Yeah, I'm working on here, we don't know for sure from last time.
Right. Any other matters? Mr. Bishop? Call this meeting adjourned at 7:32?